All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council is rejoining from closed session. There's nothing to report. We are coming together for a regular City Council meeting. I want to call the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting to order on Wednesday, January the 23rd at 6:06 PM. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, January 25th at 1:00 PM and Sunday, January 27th at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and it'll be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience that may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the speaker cards. Those are the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room and provide it to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen. Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Sun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And next item.
That'll take us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
And I'd like to invite the newly appointed city managers to lead us in the pledge, please. Mr. Berman.
(inaudible)
At the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the City Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, please. If you can join us. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, I have an agenda in front of me. Entertained motion?
Motion through.
Second. Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Right, next item.
We have no closed session items under Section 3 and no presentations under Section 4, which will take us direct to Section 5, Public Comment.
Okay, Public Comment. We have our first speaker lined up, Kathy Yang. Dr. Yang, coming up.
Good evening, Your Honor Mayor and everyone. I'm Kathy Yang. I'm a private citizen living in Laguna Estate. And I moved to this town three years ago from New Jersey, Cherry Hill Township. And I discovered that I love the city weather and I plan to live rest of my life here. However, I discovered that the medical needs and accommodation is very limited. I actually was originally in the Mercy Group and it took me like two years to even get doctor appointments or that. So this year I switched to the Kaiser and Kaiser, the Longhorn Place, and most physicians, they don't take new patients. So I found the city, this is the place, seemed ranked as a very high as a livable city and affordable retirement home, that the medical services is very limited. So I had to travel to Sacramento, the Kaiser there with a relatively old facility and with very limited physician need. So not long ago, my neighbors and I heard a new contemporary hospital gonna be built in this town. We were all very excited because this is one of the criteria that we chose the place to live and the medical accommodations. And I was a little bit surprised. I heard something negative about that. So I want to share my perspective that three years ago, I lived in the Cherry Hill Township of New Jersey. Over there, I live exact similar like gated community like this one I have. And there was a virtual hospital right behind our row and plus the medical offices. Most people, that was a more Jewish concentrated town. And most people view this as a very positive benefit to the citizens because we have convenience to access the hospital. My both kids born there, that's just right street behind my, the buildings. And that area actually considered as a prestigious area. So people all view that as convenient, very positive. And actually, three years ago, when I, actually my son got the accident and got hurt in friend's house, and then they called me, "Why don't you come over? There's an emergency, your son." So I went to the old hospital, actually didn't exist, but I didn't realize, keep up, that the hospital need to be expanded and moved to the other area over there. So the most citizens were very unhappy about that. So I just want to share this, my view about to having that because I bought the house. Right now, it's the most expensive one in Laguna, in the Laguna Estate. And I want to get the most best out of it. So I want the city to support this and it's gonna be benefit to the citizens. I have many friends from San Jose area, they're thinking about moving here. When I told that, they all excited. They asked me more when this build. I said, "Our hospital probably take four or five years." So you can, they asked me more, like other, do you have other excitement from city? I said, "I'm sorry, I'm not involved."
You can wrap it up, Doctor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayor, I have a question for the Doctor. Dr. Yang, just a couple of things. First of all, can, maybe you can give your contact information to somebody so that we can get you in touch with the medical school because they're gonna be doing more outreach to folks.
Okay.
And I think it'd be beneficial if you were in the loop for all of those meetings.
Sure.
And then, I just had a question, maybe when you lived in Cherry Hill, what was your experience with noise and sirens?
No, it's a suburb hospital and it's a virtual hospital with a trauma center. It was quiet. We're actually one major street behind all that. So they're surrounded also by medical offices. You never hear anything. And usually people say, "Oh, you live near hospital?" Like that actually consider was good. Of course, it's all about management. And I consider the contemporary hospitals, that's a benefit to the city because most hospitals around here kind of outdated.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next speaker is Nilden John Charles. Following Mr. Charles is Mark Graham.
Good evening, Councilmember. So I live in the Westlake Community, which represents Darren's and Sun's area. So prior to the election, you guys had a conversation regarding community workforce agreement. And as a matter of fact, you guys set up an ad hoc committee to do investigation, to research, to find out what community workforce agreement is all about. And to my knowledge, that you guys haven't met up, it's been a while since you guys met up and have this discussion. So I'm here today just to find out, what is the city doing about a community workforce agreement? And how are we gonna move forward with a workforce agreement for the city? So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Graham.
I just wanted to note that Mr. Graham did submit a PowerPoint presentation in accordance with our policy. As of yesterday, he submitted some revisions earlier today. They were minor editing revisions to the PowerPoint, but if the council wants to entertain having that new revised PowerPoint, I can pull that up.
As long as you keep it within three minutes, Mr. Graham.
Sure.
I should be able to pull that up, Mr. Graham. There we are.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham. I live in Elk Grove. Let me begin with a question. What information do you have that 5G is safe? What evidence do you have? What information do you have that the long-term involuntary exposure to the pulsed electromagnetic radiation that these antennas are going to put off is not going to cause health impacts? Well, that's the subject of what I'm talking about tonight. And there is something the council can do to learn about and raise awareness about the cell antenna health and safety. And I'm telling a story, I believe I sent you a copy of this letter from Senator Richard Blumenthal of Connecticut and Congresswoman Anna Eshu from California's 18th District to the Federal Communications Commission. And these are some excerpts from that letter. But, long story short, in November, there was a Senate Commerce Committee field hearing or meeting in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And the mayor, whose name is Paul Tenhaigen, asked this question about Federal Communications Commission. And you can read it. But he's trying to find out, for the people that he represents in Sioux Falls, what can I tell them that shows that 5G is gonna be safe? All right. And this is the response from Commissioner Brendan Carr. He basically gave the old, "Don't worry." But as it says on the slide, he did not provide any proof of evidence. The reality is, most of the regulations that apply to exposure to this electromagnetic radiation was developed in 1996 and have not been updated since then. So, this is Senator Richard Blumenthal from Connecticut and he and Congresswoman Anna Eshu, there's her district right there, you can see San Francisco. They wrote this letter that I've either sent you or I'm going to send you to the Federal Communications Commission. And there are a couple excerpts from the letter. And what I'm recommending is that the city get, ask Senators Feinstein and Harris and also Congressman Amubera to do the same thing as these two members of Congress have done, which is follow up with Federal Communications Commission. That's a long excerpt from the letter. You'll have the letter. But this is the action part of the letter that they sent. Provide to our offices the 5G safety determination and the current citations for the studies informing that safety determination. The city can do that. You can ask for this information. And if you're on the brink of approving an agreement with Verizon, an agreement with AT&amp;T, and a zoning code amendment which will grease the skids for all these things to go all over the city, I think you should. So, please read the letter. Write to the senators that I put here in the second paragraph. You can also write directly to the Federal Communications Commission and ask them the same question. And lastly, while you're at it, recommend a vote against S-3157, which is a bill that would really strip away city powers even more than they've already been stripped. Why would you do this? First of all, you have nothing to gain, nothing to lose and a lot to gain. And if our congressional delegation will also weigh in with FCC on this, it will make FCC more likely to respond to it. And you'll find out what really information they have. You'll find out if they really have scientific research that backs up their claim that it's all safe. I think it'll be a good way to help the council and the staff to better understand the issue as well as to help Elk Grove residents better understand the issue. And I'm gonna meet with Mr. Berman when I can and hopefully this will be one of the things that we're gonna talk about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Lynn Wheat, following Lynn Wheat is Sharon Anderson.
Good evening, Lynn Wheat. And tonight I come before you and I won't take a lot of time. If people want to hear more about this ordinance I'm proposing, you can go to ElkGroveNews.net where I had a lengthy discussion of why I think this would be a good idea. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read the ordinance that I believe that you ought to consider this new year, as we want to approach this year with fresh eyes. And I just know that if we enact this particular ordinance, we'll just have a phenomenal year. Whereas, the purpose of Elk Grove City Council Meeting Item 7 is mandated to be reports on regional boards, commissions, and committees. And whereas, Elk Grove City Council Meeting Item 7 has become a report of the Elk Grove City Council's social calendar, denying the public complete reports on regional boards, commissions, committees. And whereas, the Elk Grove City Council prefers the regional boards, commissions, committee reports to be a congenial rendition of their bi-weekly bulletin of personal enjoyment to the citizens of the city. And whereas, the City, Elk Grove City Council, wants the City of Elk Grove to be a destination city to attract visitors and tourists to the city through their social calendar report. And whereas, the City of Elk Grove wants to further the economic interests within the city to enhance economic development through tourism. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Elk Grove, the Elk Grove City Council, ordain the above as written by the people of the City of Elk Grove and direct the city manager to prepare an additional agenda item at the end of every City Council meeting to hereby be called the Elk Grove City Council Congeniality Report. And my suggestion would be, just as we as the public are limited to three minutes, that when you have your congeniality report, you also limit that to three minutes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharon Anderson.
Hello, Mayor Lee and Councilmembers. I'm Sharon Anderson here before you say I'm back. And to just let you know that I just adore, I think your staff do a marvelous job and I can't say that enough. However, your online app and the Elk Grove, AskElkGrove@ElkGroveCity.org leaves a lot to be desired. Every time I've had to use it or I've tried to use it, the information doesn't somehow get transmitted to the staff appropriately. And I get asked a second time to provide the address or the location of what I'm seeing and the photos that I've already uploaded. So I'm kinda doing work twice. I just want to let you know that the app isn't working, neither is the email, because you guys shifted, you shifted your app. And I know it can be fixed and I've asked the staff, they're probably tired of me always asking the same question, you know, "When's it gonna get fixed? When are you gonna get the information the first time?" As opposed to me having to send it to you because you can't see what it was that I was illuminating. So that's that. The other thing for the economic, our economic folks, I think that we're having a missed opportunity. I recently went through a lot of medical stuff and I'm finding that I had to go to Roseville for certain things. I had to go to Mercy San Juan. I had to go downtown, or Dignity, whatever you wanna call it, because no one has bothered to ask some of the medical foundations to provide services here in Elk Grove where there's 170-plus thousand people, almost 180, plus we service Galt, plus we service Lowdi. They come this way for those particular foundations. I'm sure Sutter has the same situation where you have to go elsewhere to get specialty care. There's no reason for that. Even though money lives in Placer County, so to speak, we also have people here. And I think your Economic Development Manager, sorry Darren, can really do a good job reaching out to these foundations. I don't want to do it. I was thinking I could do it, but that's actually someone else's job, to try to get services here. I didn't like having to drive miles up 99. You can understand that. And finally, I'm back into another retirement gig job, a side job. My time with pro sports is over and I'm serving on a state, in state capacity, as just a retired Inuit and having fun, that's a load of fun. Shane already knows about it, we've been in conversation. I'm coordinating the statewide illegal dumping technical advisory committee. It's a committee of a variety of people from public works, code enforcement, law enforcement, you name it. There are so many people that are involved with this, some of the, you know, "Keep California Beautiful." I just want to let you know that that is a committee that I'm coordinating and so if there's ever a need, let me know. The other part of it is, you guys have taught me really well, your staff have taught me incredibly well what their system is on dealing with illegal dumping and homeless encampment cleanups and those sorts of things. And I really appreciate being able to cut my teeth here so that I can be smart there.
Sharon, have you been working with Shane and Rosa relative to your new position?
Shane's fully aware of what I'm doing. He knew back in April that I was looking at this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you for stepping up and doing that. That's awesome.
It's part-time, so it's kinda cool.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Seeing that there are no additional speaker, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Few items to report. We had a great weekend, Martin Luther King Jr. celebration, starting with the breakfast with community members on Saturday, or yeah, on Saturday, and then Monday with the march with a lot of people throughout the region. Elk Grove was well represented with T-shirts and signs and it was a great, great opportunity to celebrate diversity and inclusiveness. We also had a great activity on Saturday later in the day. More than 70 teens showed up for the Elk Grove Youth Commission's Shape Your Future event. We partnered with the CSD and that event was a great success. A lot of resume building, job searching, money management techniques and tools for our teens. Want to let the public know that our nonprofit grant application period is open for 2019-20. That's for CDBG grants, community service grants, and event sponsorship grants. We do have a workshop coming up on February 12th at 2:30 PM right here in the council chambers, educating those nonprofits that are interested in participating about how to go about that application process. We also have another event coming up on February 1st at 6 o'clock at the Sacramento Asian Sports Foundation facility, it's celebration of Lunar New Year, that the city has been working with our multicultural commission to put on. The event is free. We encourage everybody to come out and celebrate with us. We have a program called Community Ambassador Program. Some people may not be aware of it. We have currently 45 volunteers, way of individuals that want to volunteer and get involved in the community. They volunteer at various activities and events throughout the city. We're having a training coming up at the police department on Saturday, February 2nd from 10:30, starting at 10:30. So if people are interested in volunteering for that, they can go on our website and learn more and then come out to that training opportunity. There's also a, the Elk Grove Youth Commission is going to be hosting a food drive, community food drive on Tuesday, February 13th from 5 to 8 PM. Members of the public can drop off canned goods right here in the council chambers. And those donations will go to help the Elk Grove Food Bank. Final item on here is, wanted to let the council know that a couple of big roadway projects were recently completed. We saved approximately $3.1 million that are completed on, actually ahead of time. Those are the Bradshaw Sheldon Road intersection improvements as well as Waterman Road pavement rehab and bike lanes. I know our public works staff does a great job of doing that. As you might recall, one of the things we brought back to you was the recommendation to close those roads in their entirety for a period of time to expedite the work, get that work done. We were able to do that and save a lot of money and time in making that happen. So appreciate the council's approval of those projects as well as the kind of the expediting work that allowed us to save that kind of money and get the projects done so quickly. So always happy to report that. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have. Otherwise, these reports are available on the city's website.
Jason, relative to those two intersections, I don't know whether this is you or Bob that needs to address it. I know I've brought it up before, there's continual questions when we're gonna get the landscaping finished on both the roundabouts.
We've actually issued the contract for that and so it's in the works right now. The irrigation for it comes from a shallow well and we're trying to work through those issues with the county to be able to provide irrigation source. We're hopefully, hopefully we're gonna get those in here in the near future.
Okay, 'cause I know it's been, what, two years now since?
It's been, it's been quite a while.
Waterman was done?
It's been a journey, yes.
So people are pretty anxious who drive that every day to get that finished, so. When you have actually a hard date, could you come back to us with that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Jason, the public meeting for the CDBG and CSG grant, is that something that could be held also after hours? Because I know some people that are interested in attending that and knowing more about it, but they can't make it during the 2:30 timeframe? The other option maybe is to have it online or on a conference call so folks can call in and hear. Is that an option as well too? I just had somebody ask and so I thought I'd ask you.
I think we can look at different options. Maybe we can tape it and put it and make it available online or something else that we can take a look at.
That'd be great, yeah.
So that's a good question. We'll see what we can do. Okay. Any others?
Thank you.
Good.
All right, next item.
Take us to Section 7, Council Comments, Reports and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, Councilman Detrick.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hume and I just finished before our previous two meetings, the city audit committee and they received the highest ranking possible, which is called unmodified. And in essence, it's a totally clean opinion, so that give praise to our staff for putting together a dot in the eye and crossing the T and making sure that everything's fallen into place. Jason and Brad, your team's done a phenomenal job and appreciate that. Went to the Project Ride Crab Feed with over 2,000 people. Went to the first annual MLK Elk Grove Breakfast. Went to the North State Building Industry Association Board Installation Dinner and there was a special award for former Elk Grove Mayor and Councilman, Assemblyman Jim Cooper, for his unwavering support of the building industry. Went to the Heart Campaign, excuse me, Heart Pancake Fundraising Breakfast. Went to the Elk Grove Chamber Gala where they recognized all the outstanding businesses and installation of new officers. With, one of the highlights of the night was outgoing President Oscar Ocon and incoming President Kevin Spees. Most of you know that I work for PG&E and I kinda wanted to give a little update because it's gonna affect my time spending on council business. So most of you have heard that PG&E is going through proposed bankruptcy. Right now, the proposal is that they're gonna file in the next two weeks for Chapter 11, which is reorganization. Then there's the order from the California judge stating that we have to inspect over 100,000 miles of our overhead distribution and transmission lines, which is a monumental task. We literally have thousands of people out there right now doing that. My position at PG&E is, I am the Northern California estimating supervisor and we do all the design work on the wood, all the wooden light duty steel poles for the northern half of the company. So right now, we have a monumental task for my team to perform, which is causing me to have to put in a lot more time than I normally would in that free time I usually use to do my city council work. So there's some other meeting obligations in the Bay Area that I'm gonna have to go to more often. So I just kinda wanted to let staff know and if by some chance somebody doesn't see me in an event or meeting, a council meeting, that it may be because I'm off doing business for PG&E to support the mandated work by the Judge of California. And that's all I have.
Excellent. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I serve on the Juvenile Justice Commission and I have been for the last four years. And one of the things that we do is we inspect some of the police departments. So I had the opportunity to inspect the Citrus Heights Police Department and I was so impressed at the way they take care of the juveniles. Actually, the whole year, they only had one, so that was really impressive for me to see. In the past, I've done the Sacramento Police Department and CalExpo and that's a little different. But to be able to inspect Citrus Heights and see how they had everything, I was really impressed. I attended the 2019 economic forecast where Jim Wonderben, who is the president of the Bay Area Council, talked about the economic climate and forecast, forecast the economic business climate in the past 11 years. So that was really interesting for me to hear that. And Councilmember Sun was there as well, too. I attended the API Caucus Welcome Reception. It's the new year and so all the caucuses are getting together and that was the first reception I've been to. Also serve on the League of Cities Taxation and Revenue Committee. One of the things that I forgot to bring tonight, which I had for all of you here, was the governor's proposed 2019 and 20 budget that he had listed out. I printed everything out and that I'd bring it, so I'll bring it next time. It was really interesting to see what he was proposing. And then, it's tax season, so one of the things that the governor put on his list also is to increase the VITA Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, which helps families or individuals that earn $60,000 or less an opportunity to have somebody prepare their taxes. Organizations, like the organizations that I run, we certify our staff to be able to do tax preparation and we do this for free. You can get up to $6,500 back in earned income tax credit. So I'll make sure to put that out and maybe put it on the city's website as well, too, in case anybody's interested in that. It is a free service. I attended the Aria's 10th Installation Dinner. Funds that were raised that night up to about $3,000 were then given to the fire victims. Councilmember Sun and I was at that event and proud to support them. I also was at the King Breakfast, but had to leave a little early for the Women's March that happened in Sacramento, took place in Sacramento. One of the things that Councilwoman Angelique Ashby from Sacramento mentioned was that last year, when she was there, she was surrounded by men. And this year, all the women that were elected, it was almost about 20 of us all across the region were up there and so it was nice to see. And so it was nice to see more and more women choosing to put themselves out there and get into, put themselves out there into positions where it is in election and representing cities and whatnot. I also attended the Project Ride Crab Feed. As our councilmember said, over 2,000 people attended that event. Really impressed how they were able to get everything out there. I probably ate more than I should have that night, and I think I might be crabbed out now. Also attended the MLK March. I've been doing that march for many years now, and it was really heartwarming to see our city out there. A lot of the schools in our city was out there. I think I saw our police chief was out there. Yep, police chief was out there. I didn't get a chance to see you, but it was nice to, to see our city well represented there. During the Sage Recognition, I was out there in the community, so it was nice to see Bobby Singh Allen there, the mayor there, councilmember Sun there, and also Assemblymember Jim Cooper. And lastly, I missed the last council meeting because I've had several deaths in the family. It's been really crazy. It's only beginning of the year, and I've gone to at least 10 either memorial services or funerals or a celebration of life already, and I had to miss the last council meeting. I was only here for the very beginning, if you recall. But one of the discussions that took place was the auto mall and the gift card, and I wanted to see if that's something that we can discuss since we're all here now.
It's already been requested to come back with a report, so.
I'd like to find out what your questions are, because I know that there wasn't really much deliberation on it. It was just talked about whether to bring it back. Personally, I know that Jason, as well as Brad, has sent us quite a bit of information, as well as the survey that was done. Personally, I was involved when we did this before, and I was supported because the Elk Grove Auto Mall has been a huge supporter of ours and generator of obviously a large amount of sales tax. But I think when we've done the analyzation, it wasn't really very productive. I think there was, if I recall from the survey, one or two people actually chose to buy a car because of the gift card program, and that the program that was being proposed this time is a quarter million dollars. And relative to the return on investment, we would be negative probably $125,000 if, I'm trying to remember if that Brad, you have Brad nodding his head, yes, that's about right. And I think the, to put that forward, I think would be irresponsible. So I personally don't see any need to bring it back, based on the information that's been given to us by, the detailed information already given to us in the last several weeks by staff. So I would like to have a reconsideration whether we spend any more staff time to bring that back.
My feeling is we've requested and we have a consensus to bring it back, so I'll wait, I'll state my discussion until then.
Well, I'm asking that we retake another vote, now that we have the entire council here. And so I make a motion that we do not spend any more time on this and don't bring it back.
And I'm going to agree with that, because I think if it was negatively impacting us and I didn't see any benefits with it, I'm going to go ahead and second that.
So we have motion and second.
Okay. Gentlemen, any input?
Well, I mean, I could go either way on this. I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I guess if, you know, if, I don't want to, I don't want to take a whole lot of staff's time either, but if they also have reports or that they can, information they can utilize from before, that they don't have to do a whole lot of work, I'm just thinking out loud right now if that's.
Well, I know we've all been given that information, so I'm not sure additional information you're going to get.
So Mayor members, just on, Mayor members of the council. The council direction was to bring it back. Staff can certainly do that. And you can change your mind if you want to, but I would caution having any extended discussion on that. It's not an agendized item. If you want to direct staff not to bring it back by consensus of the council, you certainly have that ability.
Ms. Robbs, can I ask a question? If, if when we get it brought back, would the same information be brought back to us then? The exact same information? Would it be updated information?
I would defer to the finance staff on that, or the city manager.
Our economic development director is working with our finance director. It will provide the information, it's already been provided, as well as likely some additional information. So we're working on that now. We're anticipating bringing it back at probably the next city council meeting, but certainly we'll take direction from council on whether you want that to come back or not.
And that really was why I agreed to have the item brought back, is not necessarily that I think it's a good idea or that I support it, but because I'm privy to the information that staff has drilled down and put forth, I just thought to have an open discussion on it and share that so that everybody else knows why we might not adopt it.
And I think that's important, you know, as a matter of transparency and having things fed out in public, I think it's extremely important. Now, I wasn't here when this project, this program was put into effect. I would like to review it, and I'd like to go on the record exactly seeing how this impacts the auto mall and whether this is beneficial or not. I think that's important for the members of the community that have requested it, and I think it's consistent with transparency.
Okay, call for the vote.
Okay, all right. See, all in favor and bringing it back? Say aye.
That was the motion.
Okay, what was the motion? I'm sorry. Repeat it, please.
The motion was to not bring it back.
Okay. So the motion and a second is to not bring back the auto mall incentive program. All in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Stands it is. All right, let's move on. Okay, Councilman Sun.
Okay, attended the, we had a candlelight vigil for Natalie Corona, put on by our end of watch. Councilman Detrick was there as well. You know, I'm just, it's unfortunate there's something like this can happen in our regional community, but I, you know, if I take something away from it, I'm proud of our end of watch and our community here in Elk Grove. So many folks came out to show support for Officer Natalie Corona. So that was, you know, it was an opportunity for solidarity and appreciate everybody coming out on a rainy day. Project Ride Crab Feed, as already mentioned, and great turnout there. Had a chance to visit with our Laguna Lake Homeowners Association and talk to residents about things happening in the community. We had a CACOG board meeting, and something that I think we're all, I think we'll get more of this about at our strategic meeting, but I have to impress upon folks the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, MTP, and Sustainable Community Strategy, that each cog is required to prepare. The ability to meet the 19% greenhouse gas reduction as required by the Air Resources Board is becoming very, very difficult. And what that means to all of us in the six county, 22 city region is transportation dollars going away. So there's a lot, a lot of work to be, to be done, region, as an entire region, and it's not going to get solved overnight, but it is, it is definitely something that we're taking seriously and that is going to require a lot of, a lot of effort from, from everybody in the region in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Basically, vehicle miles traveled, because that's your number one pollutant from, from cars. And that's, that's a state mandate that's come, that we're living with. It's not just up to us as a city anymore, or even as a, even the region. We're bound by these state requirements, so folks need to understand that. MLK Breakfast, dropped in on that, as well as the Women's March. I was very proud to support the elected women in our region, especially our own councilwoman Nguyen up there. It's great to see her up there standing with her fellow colleagues. The MLK March, I think that was one of the best ones, and I've been attending since I got into office, and it's, it's always a good time. Just everybody's in good spirits and, you know, walking for a common cause of inclusiveness and, you know, just the message of Dr. Martin Luther King. I think it was, it was a great showing for that, in the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King. But I want to give a shout out to Jason Bierman, our new city manager, who's also out there, as well as Kara Reddick. And I know Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Detrick, you guys were both working that day. I know you wanted to be there as well. And finally, I wanted to ask my colleagues for support on something to bring back as well. We, I'm not sure about the timing of this. We may be too late already, but City of Sacramento is part of the fuel network to provide funding for potentially DACA immigrants. They've got, they're applying for broader regional help, so it's a grant funding essentially. It's for the Vera Institute of Justice. And they're right now reaching out to not just Sacramento, but Yolo County, West Sacramento, Woodland have all joined in. And it's, it's not, at this point in time, it's just to try to keep the opportunity open for us to apply together as a, as a region to get more grant monies to come in to help. For us, it would be the, the biggest immigrant population in Elk Grove, I understand, is the Vietnamese community, and so there's some, they've got some percentages in this. There's a letter essentially. What I'm asking for is, you know, council agreement to bring it back, have us look at it, see if we want to sign on to apply for the grant money. And it's, the letter is just to keep the option open for us to do it. It's not a commitment at this time. So, John, I don't know if you got anything more out of that call.
I have a little bit of information about it, but we're still gathering, as Councilmember Sun said about this program. What it appears to me is Vera is offering a grant of up to $100,000, and it can be applied for as a collaboration of cities. And as Councilmember Sun has mentioned, we're jurisdictions, not just cities, County of Yolo, City of West Sacramento, the City of Sacramento, and the City of Woodland have asked if we're interested in joining. And what it essentially is, as far as I understand the program so far, based on the information I have, is that Vera would be awarding to a legal services provider in those jurisdictions to provide legal services to persons that are subject to deportation or, or some sort of immigration, legal proceedings that they need assistance with. The letter that is being proposed would ask that these cities or this collaboration of jurisdictions make a non-specific commitment that they would be willing to commit public funds. The program does not necessarily require that an amount of public funds be identified. That could come later. But that's one of the criteria as to whether or not Vera is interested in providing the grant, that the jurisdictions are willing to at least make an acknowledgement that they're willing to make a commitment of funds. And so if that's something that the council is interested in bringing back for consideration, as Councilmember Sun says, there were some internal timelines that may make us too late. I think there's probably still the opportunity if the city is interested in doing this. So if that's something the council wants to do, we could bring that back.
I'm sorry, can I chime in a bit? And I, I'm going to have to recuse myself from this. As you recall, several meetings ago, I talked about this, because I'm a part of this network as well, too. And funding from the city, we did, I think we did allocate some funding from the city to.
Yes.
To this cause. And so the funding has run out, and what, I mean, I think you did a wonderful job explaining it. And you're right, the letter needs to go in fairly quickly, I think within the next couple of days here. And I don't know if I should even give more information, or if I should stop here and step out, so you all can talk about this. But the reason why it's a conflict of interest or can be perceived as one is because my organization is a part of this network and that we work with clients that are immigrants, refugees, and undocumented, and that we do refer them to this network. And while I will not receive any of the funding, it still can be somewhat be a little bit of a situation where it could be perceived as a conflict of interest.
Yeah, that's correct. And you recall when this came forth to the council before you declared a conflict of interest and stepped out. If the decision is just to bring this back or not, I'm comfortable that you can stand the dais, but if we have a discussion about it and certainly a vote if it comes back, you would have to recuse yourself.
You know, if I clarified it before, but I received a call from Vice Mayor Guerra, not Councilmember Nguyen, about this, so just to make that clear. But anyway, I just want to see if colleagues be willing to bring it back to take a look.
Chair, I'll support you.
And in that same vein, Councilmember Nguyen should not participate in the vote to bring it back even. You should, you should abstain.
Yes.
That's fine. I'm supportive.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Last, Mayor Hume.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this brief. I attended the Neighborhood Outreach, Outreach Meeting for the proposed Elk Grove Afghanistan Community Center at the corner of Campbell Road and Elk Grove Florin Road. Good turnout from, both from the neighborhood as well as from the Afghani community. They catered in some pretty outstanding food for the event, and they had a very nice presentation of their proposal and took questions from the neighbors who were in attendance. And all in all, I think it was a much more cordial meeting than I perhaps expected to be. The mayor was there and did address the, the group, but then he had to leave to attend something else, so I just want to give that update to him as well, that it was a very informative meeting. Had an RT meeting last Monday. Nothing to report on Elk Grove specific items, except to say that now that Folsom and Citrus Heights have annexed back into RT, Elk Grove is now certainly the low man or woman on the totem pole with three of the votes for the weighted voting system. So, but I'm still there representing. Had a meeting with Congressman Barra here in City Hall to discuss, it started as a meeting to discuss his support for some grant applications for the Connector Project, specifically for the Folsom area, and then also evolved into discussing multimodal stations in Elk Grove, the Camera Road extension, as well as our economic development efforts and our attempts to attract state jobs down here, since we have so many state workers that commute downtown. So nice to have the congressman in the, in the building and got an opportunity to introduce our new city manager and have him come in and give a brief update as well. Councilmember Nguyen and I attended the Paratransit Executive Committee meeting this morning. Nothing to report on that, except one of the things that was being discussed was whether or not to adopt a, what's the word I'm looking for? A reserve policy that would, that would establish that paratransit keep 45 days worth of operating reserves on hand, which then later today, as was mentioned by Councilmember Detrick, we had an audit committee meeting where we received the unmodified audit of the CAFR, and I asked a question about our reserve policy, which is a percentage-based reserve, and at its current rate and our current burn rate, it's about a 60-day roughly reserve. And so I think at the retreat, we're going to discuss whether or not it's prudent to increase that, and I know that the more money you have on hand, the better. Got a Connector meeting Friday in Rancho Cordova, and then I will be calling in for the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority meeting. It's going to be down in Fresno, and there's no way for me to get down there, so I'm going to phone in for that one. And then I'd just like to take a minute and thank staff, particularly Shane Diller in the back of the room there. I had a person reach out to me because their project, although it was within the Elk Grove city limits, it was this weird little dip of the zip codes, and it had a Sacramento zip code, and they felt like their residents would want to be living in Elk Grove with an Elk Grove address. And so my initial response was that's way above my pay grade, but I reached out to staff just out of courtesy almost, and Shane said, sure, we'll look into it. Got ahold of the post office. The post office did have a procedure that has now been amended. They will have Elk Grove addresses, and Shane sent me a nice, closed the loop email to say that now it's good we have kind of in place what to do if this arises again. So thank you very much for following through on that and getting the job done. I appreciate it. That's it. Thank you.
Excellent. Sanitation meeting was canceled this morning. I have air quality tomorrow. As the vice mayor mentioned, both he and I participated with the Afghan Community Outreach, participated in Chamber of Gala, and the, the one, there are two events in which I'd like to highlight and stress how important it was, was the MLK Breakfast, which is the, was the inaugural. And I look forward to seeing that fully integrated with the March 3, 65 as well. A number of us was there. I was very pleased to see the number of Elk Groveans participating in it and looking forward to next year. All right, that is it. All right, next item.
Take us on to section eight, Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, want to open public comment, seeing no members of public sign up to speak. Want to close public comment. Council deliberation in direction.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Next item.
Take us to section nine, our public hearings. Starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider amendments to this triangle special planning area.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Christopher Jordan. Item before you this evening is the Triangle Special Planning Area update. Quick overview of where we'll go through tonight. The update before you is part of the consistency for the upcoming general plan update, which you'll be getting at your next meeting. We're looking at revisions here to the land plan based upon your prior direction from 2017, which I'll walk through this evening. A lot of this is based upon updated infrastructure. We are updating infrastructure and service information, the SPA, as well as some allowed use and development standards based upon your direction. And we're looking tonight for direction from council on the remaining items so we can finalize the update to the Special Planning Area SPA document.
Christopher?
Sir?
It's not up on our screen.
I'll work on pulling that up, see if we can get-
Turn it off.
No, it is.
Great. Thank you. So, quick background. The Triangle area is a triangular-shaped area bounded by Bond Road, Bradshaw, and Grant Line. It's bisected by Elk Grove Boulevard on the far east side of the city. Historically, the area has a rural character to it. There's a lot of existing five and 10-acre blocks, a couple two-acre pieces, and some one-acre lots. Right before the city incorporated, then after incorporation, a number of one-acre developments were approved. These are the Silvergate, Van Rooten projects that are up along the Bond Road side. As part of the general plan preparation in 2003, council gave direction and an SPA was prepared, which provides for one-acre lotting for the entire area, and also includes a 40-acre commercial overlay at certain locations, certain intersections on the boundary. In 2004, the council approved the Special Planning Area document, which implements that council direction. That's what we're updating this, this time around. Little bit of context for you. In this graphic, the Triangle area is bounded in the red outline. You can see the major roads labeled in yellow. Inside the Triangle area of the existing subdivision, Silvergate, Van Rooten, and Capito to the north, those are those newer one-acre lots. Many of them are private, they're all private roads, gated communities. To the west, you have the East Elk Grove Specific Plan Area, more traditional suburban subdivision, four, five, six to the acre lot sizes. And then, as part of the general plan update to the southeast, there is the East Study Area, which in the draft general plan contemplates future urban development in that area. There's prior projects that were approved but haven't fully constructed or constructed at all yet. These are the De Benedetto Project, about a 40-acre piece at the northwest corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Grant Line, as well as the Brownwood Project, about halfway between Bradshaw and Grant Line on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard. So, just understanding the context of this area and looking at how this area fits between the rural area to the north, the East Elk Grove area to the west, and the East Study Area to the southeast, sort of becomes an inflection point or center of all of this area, this development that's been occurring. Quickly, I want to touch on those prior projects that haven't constructed yet. First, Brownwood, approved in 2006. It's a 10-acre piece, again, on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard. It was approved with one-acre lots. There's 10 in total. It does, as part of the prior approvals, include a berm along Elk Grove Boulevard to attenuate for roadway noise. And all the access to those lots would have been internal. That project has since expired. The De Benedetto Project, again, 40 acres at the northwest corner of Grant Line and Elk Grove Boulevard. This also had one-acre lots, and it also included a berm along both the Elk Grove Boulevard and Grant Line frontages. There were frontage improvement obligations to both those roads as well. It provided connections at Elk Grove Boulevard and Jetmar. This is a way to connect all those areas together. There was some preliminary grading that was completed for the project, but the final map was never recorded, and so the approvals have since expired. So as part of the general plan updates, we identified for you a number of concerns, looking at infrastructure obligations for this area, one-acre lot sizes, public water and sewers required. So those utilities have to be extended from the East Elk Grove area down Elk Grove Boulevard to get to the developable areas. Again, you also have the context surrounding densities, the East Elk Grove area on the west side, the future East Study Area to the southeast, and what, from a density perspective, does this piece start to look like? Does it retain the one-acre lot size and be a little bit difference between these two more suburban urban designations? Or does it look as something else? So in March of 2017, as part of the general plan update and the study session series that you had on that, your council direction was to convert some of the land planning for that area, north of Elk Grove Boulevard, to allow one-third acre lot sizes, and south of Elk Grove Boulevard, quarter acre lot sizes. And then with the De Benedetto property, there was a band of one-acre lot-sized buffer along the northern boundary and then along Jetmar. Some concerns were raised about that direction. We heard some support from property owners for De Benedetto and Brownwood sites, among some others. We heard some concerns from other property owners and residents in the area, concerned about consistency with the council's prior direction in 2003, concerns about impacts to drainage, traffic noise, aesthetics, and other factors. So you had us bring the item back to you in August of 2017. As part of that discussion, you did not direct any changes to your prior direction, so that prior map stayed the same. But you did direct staff to work with the property owners and residents in the area on the SPA update, work through any issues that they had, identify those, and start preparing the revisions to the SPA. So that process began in September of 2017, and our outreach spanned five workshops that concluded in September of last year, with draft revisions to the SPA and discussion on some of the options. As part of that process, we sort of divided the area up into four sub-areas for ease of discussion about how the land uses would work in those areas and what the conditions would look like. The north area was essentially all the existing development along Bond, as well as the Jetmar corridors, Titan Lane areas, Pavech areas. Those would remain as one acre, obviously. Then we had on the north side of Elk Grove Boulevard, the east and west sub-areas. The east was exclusively the De Benedetto property, and the west was everything west of that. And the south sub-area was everything south of Elk Grove Boulevard. I'll walk through those changes briefly in a moment, but your planning commission reviewed the draft changes at their hearing in December 2018, identified some concerns, and directed it back to you for consideration for the recommendation or direction. The draft SPA amendments that you have in your packet this evening, I won't go through them in detail, but some of the high-level changes that we've made at this point, various whole sections have been updated based upon current conditions in the area. We've updated the administrative section with corrective references predominantly to our city municipal code. We've added a provision, the request of residents for forfeits of vote requirement of the council, make subsequent amendments. We generally don't do this, but we have done it in the southeast policy area. So we've carried that idea forward here at their request. There is an additional discussion on roadway design. We've added cross-sections for the arterials, so to add a little bit more definition about what those future improvements look like. We've updated and added development processes and approval section. This helps to clarify what the process is for subsequent subdivision applications, design reviews, and specifically requires that certain tentative subdivision maps, not parcel maps, would require additional public engagement prior to going through their hearing process with the commission in the future. We've also updated the allowed uses and development standards, and we've added in the standards for the third and quarter acre lot sizes, and updated the references to municipal code. The land plan that's included in there, shown here on the screen, essentially the light bluish color, gray bluish color, all the one-acre lot sizes. There was a request out of the engagement process that that west sub-area be converted back to one acre instead of the third of an acre. So that's shown here. Based upon that change, there was a request by a property owner along the boundary at De Benedetto that there be a one-acre buffer along that side of the property as well. So that's shown here. And we'll talk about the Elk Grove Boulevard frontage a little bit later. All the commercial overlays stay. All the quarter acre, south of Elk Grove Boulevard, ends up remaining. The question that really came out of the outreach process was, what do we do with the Elk Grove Boulevard corridor? What does that condition look like? Generally, two schools of thought on it. One is retain what the prior approvals did with De Benedetto and Brownwood, that the berm condition occur, and then everything behind that then be either third of acre and quarter of an acre development. The other school of thought is that, given the historic rural character, rural nature to it, that Elk Grove Boulevard ought to look in a more rural condition with front-on lots. So in that particular case, based upon access issues, and you don't want to create too much density along the corridor and have those lots then access Elk Grove Boulevard. And then additionally, from the noise issue, which we'll talk about in a minute, you'd end up with bands of one acres then along Elk Grove Boulevard, and all the more intensive development would occur behind it. So really, the direction at this point is, what, what we need direction on is, what should the Elk Grove Boulevard corridor look like? What is the character of that corridor in the future condition? So the commission reviewed this last month. They identified some concerns with the land plan changes, the density, and how the compatibility with the new development would occur against the existing conditions. They raised some issues with the frontage along Elk Grove Boulevard. They had a conversation about the Jetmar Way Access, particularly in the interim condition between development happening and then the JPA Connector Project happening, what that would look like, or even in the future condition. There were a number of ideas discussed regarding some land-to-land changes, looking at rezoning properties south of Elk Grove Boulevard to quarter acre, leaving everything north of Elk Grove Boulevard as one acre, maybe leaving one-acre lots along the Elk Grove Boulevard frontage, and even considering removing everything south of Elk Grove Boulevard from the Triangle SPA in full. So essentially changing it from a triangle, maybe more of a trapezoid for everything north, and using more standard RD4 zoning for the area south of Elk Grove Boulevard. A lot of the conditions on Elk Grove Boulevard end up focusing on what the noise mitigation looks like. As part of the general plan and our noise standards, we have a requirement to mitigate for traffic noise as part of new development. For interior noise, we have a standard of 45 decibels. That's a pretty easy thing in order to accomplish with general setbacks and building obligations. This could be as more onerous as triple-pane windows, extra insulation, thicker walls, fairly standard stuff, given the conditions out here. The outdoor activity area is essentially the backyard area of the home. That's the more onerous, the tougher one to achieve. And that's standard 60 decibels. So we have to look at what that area ends up looking like. Now, we can address that potential noise issue through one of three mechanisms. One, obviously, a wall. We see that in a lot of the suburban urban areas of the city. Two would be berms, which we have prior approvals in the Triangle Area 4. And the third, which we tend to use in Sheldon Rural Area, is the orientation of the home. Essentially, in this case, you have the home sitting between the street and the outdoor activity area, and that home provides a screening for that noise and is able to reduce the noise that's occurring in the outdoor areas to below that 60 decibel threshold. So that's a little bit of background there. Looking at what those conditions are in the future case, the draft general plan and its accompanying EIR do look at what the roadway noise conditions would look like. There's this figure that's in the EIR, which looks at roadway volumes in a build-out condition of the city. So this is not just build-out within the city, but it's also all four of the study areas that are in the draft general plan. It looks at regional traffic that occurs and influences conditions in the city. So again, full build-out of the city and then regional development out to 2035, and then full build-out of the roadway network. So all the lane capacities that are identified in the draft general plan. We've outlined the Triangle area here in the green dash. Essentially, what you get is along the roadways themselves, you get 70 and 65 decibels, but everything else sort of in between those roadways, you get the 60. Now, what's shown here on the map is a pre-mitigation condition. So we don't have any berms or walls or anything else plugged into this. We end up looking at that as a site-specific issue. So looking at those individual corridors, you'll see for a lot of the 60-decibel areas, they're fairly large distance numbers from, from the roadway itself. So for instance, Bradshaw Road, it's over 2,200 feet, Grant Line 7,500 feet, and or between 1,400 and 1,700 feet, depending upon if you're north or south of Elk Grove Boulevard. Along Elk Grove Boulevard, though, the distance is only 200 feet. So along these outer roads, we'd start to look at more berms and wall conditions. Elk Grove Boulevard gives us a little bit of consideration point. So the draft SPA, considering these, is drafted right now with a wall condition along Bradshaw, a berm on Grant Line north of Elk Grove Boulevard, and a wall with landscaping on Grant Line south of Elk Grove Boulevard, except where the commercial development occurs. Obviously, those are separate conditions, and those 60-decibel thresholds don't apply. So the question now is, what do we do with Elk Grove Boulevard? Options, obviously, then are the berm or the front-on conditions, if we don't want to be looking at a wall. Just to get a sense of scale, this is a very rough diagram of where that 60-decibel threshold is, looking at the aerial of existing conditions. So those are shown on here, just to give you a sense of how far back we're talking about. We've done a couple visual simulations at this point. This started back about February, March of last year, based upon the conversations we're having in the outreach. Worked with property owners for Brownwood, as well as one of the residential homes to the north of Elk Grove Boulevard, to see what would, conceivably, could the condition look like on Elk Grove Boulevard with a one-acre development. And then through the planning commission process last month, they asked for an additional simulation with third of an acre development. I apologize for the typo on the screen here. So we've drafted those up. Here's the existing condition, looking from the home on the north side of Elk Grove Boulevard, south towards the Brownwood property. You can see the PVC story poles that we put out on the property. These are measured out from the existing roadway, based upon what we think the roadway widening will be. So it gives us sort of an anchor point of what we think the height would be in the future. And then we can sketch over this with what we think the future condition is. So in this case, we have one-acre developments. These are front-on lots in the tan color. And then you have homes that back onto that at quarter acre, two-story. The front ones here are single-story. We've not modeled anything in terms of front yard landscaping or the driveway condition, because those start to get individualized per the lot. Certainly with landscaping, the owner can change that over time based on their desires and preferences. So we didn't want to paint an overly optimistic picture of what that condition would look like. In terms of the third of an acre development, here, we've added in the berm condition. So there's a six-foot berm with fence atop it. And then we've got some rough landscaping shown in, primarily the screening trees that then occur along the top of the berm, and those are spaced about 30 feet on center. And again, you've got third of an acre houses on the backside, that's the tan color. Those are single-story in this, and then two-story homes beyond that. And the way these are oriented, given that these homes back on to Elk Grove Boulevard, the two houses would front onto an internal street facing each Do you want to touch on the future realignment of Elk Grove Boulevard at Grant Line? This will need to happen for a number of reasons. And as part of the CIP program right now, it's in the roadway fee program as a future project. For residential developments, along that new curvature of the road that would occur there, would be constructed, you wouldn't be able to have residential fronting onto that because of the way the curve is and the line of sight issue, the safety conditions that come up. We would still need a berm along that condition to attenuate for the noise. Where the commercial development were to occur, if that's implemented through the overlay, obviously driveways consistent with city standards would be allowable. And given that it's commercial development, there wouldn't be a wall or berm required along that frontage either. Stepping back for a minute, looking at Jetmar. Right now, you can see from the aerial existing conditions with the full access of that intersection. Based on our discussions with the JPA, they're anticipating eliminating access as the Connector Project goes through. Obviously, the segment does not have funding today, so it's a number of years out. That connection would then become emergency vehicle access. So if there was a fire incident or public safety incident, that maybe there's gates or something that could be opened up and allow for the access, either ERAS or INGRES of equipment and personnel there along Grant Line. But then the daily access and their vision would occur through the De Benedetto Project when that develops. Been a number of concerns about this from the residents. You have correspondence from them about this, both in the staff report and the planning commission report that's attached, and the green sheets that you've received. You also have a comment from a group, the Triangle Community Group, and their position paper. I've copied over the six items that are in the green sheet they provided you this evening. You can see from their notes that they're asking for, there to not be a berm along Elk Grove Boulevard, and that there be homes that essentially orient and face onto Elk Grove Boulevard. They do, can, they are in these notes, willing to look at that area south of Elk Grove Boulevard, at the quarter acre lot sizes. North of Elk Grove Boulevard, they're asking for the one-acre lot sizes, and the orientation becomes the question here. Again, at the quarter acre lot size, you wouldn't be able to get connection onto Elk Grove Boulevard. The density just isn't supportive of that, given what the condition of Elk Grove Boulevard needs to be. Here's the sketch that they provided, so you can sort of see what they're looking at. Sort of thinking that through in terms of implementation, we've sketched up this diagram to look at it. So here, you've got Elk Grove Boulevard on the north. In order to do this, for the homes to then front on, but at this density, you'd essentially need a frontage road that would serve as the immediate access, that then would connect to whatever internal street that ultimately connects to Elk Grove Boulevard. There'd probably be some sort of landscaping component here, buffering between the two roads. So maybe that's 20 to 30 feet in width. The road itself would need to be 40 feet per Streets and Highway Code. Maybe we've got another 20-foot of setback between the road and the house. That's pretty much our standard for that density range. So you end up with about 100, 120 feet from Elk Grove Boulevard to the houses. Obviously, it's not the 200, but the way that home orientation works, then you get the attenuation for the noise. The home creates that separation, that buffering, mitigation. So the outdoor activity area would theoretically then perform below the 60 threshold. So the questions before you this evening, what conditions should be provided along Elk Grove Boulevard? Should there be a berm, or should it be the front-on street, the front-on condition? Staff has talked with our noise consultant from the general plan about this. Certainly, we can go through and do some additional modeling, some technical analysis, provide you with some additional resources on that, and look at a couple different, look at several of these alternatives if we wanted to. It would certainly take some time to do that. We need to come back to you at a later date. We need to come back to you at a later date. And then secondly, what adjustments, if any, should be made to the land plan, looking at the density? Do we want to look at any sort of changes in the building heights or other development standards as applicable? Concludes my presentation. Next steps, we'd be making revisions to the SPA if you direct them, incorporating these changes into the draft general plan, based upon the schedule available, or coming back with some amendments if necessary. And then we'd have the SPA and those materials back for you for action at a later date. That does conclude my presentation. Have any answer questions?
Any questions? No questions? Thank you. Thank you. At this point in time, I want to declare a public hearing open. I want to open for public comment. See, there's a couple of speakers signed up to speak. First speaker is Mike Padilla. Calling Mike is Carolyn Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor Lyon, City Council members. I'm a member of the Triangle Community Group, and I'm here tonight to present the city, to the City Council, our position in response to the proposed revisions to the Triangle special planning area. First of all, I'd like to thank Christopher, however, Jordan, for all the work and help. Without him, I don't think we would have gotten to this point where I, the group as a whole and the residents in the Triangle area can get some satisfaction as in the planning process. So again, thank you very much for the time and effort that the City Council has given us and Christopher for your time as well. We hope the city will accept the recommendations as we propose tonight in our position paper. And it's been a year-long, longer effort in developing this direction, compromise, you might say, between the residents of the Triangle and the planning staff. We've listened to developers, we've worked with them, I've worked with John Meninkas a little bit, and looked at what their needs are. We've looked at what our needs are. And I think we're getting to a point where we understand that to further develop this area, and we've been in support of development in the Triangle area, but always in the context of the SPA. And I think we're amending the SPA to meet those needs in the way we feel are necessary to keep our community and the uniqueness that we have with it. But we also understand that infrastructure costs are associated with development, and those infrastructure costs come from increased density and zoning so that the, those infrastructures can be paid for. We're not naive when it comes to that. And so we feel that our proposal is, and our, and our position really reaches to the crux of helping everybody in this. Not everybody's going to be happy, not everybody, and we think there'll be more people happy about it than sad, I believe. And I think we're going in a direction that allows us in the Triangle area to finally complete and get a future that we can really grasp and stay with, rather than this ongoing development and continual changes going on. So one of the things we do ask the council tonight to do is not disregard the extensive work done by the residents and the planning staff to get us to this point. We ask you to approve these, our recommendations, and put them into the general plan. And to this end, the group would like the council to consider, when approving those provisions, and I'll go over the five provisions again real quick, like that all zoning north of Elkhart Boulevard should retain AR1. All zoning south of Elkhart Boulevard shall be zoned no less than RD4 and RD5, which is significant. And RD5 is significant. It goes, remember we were talking about one-third versus one-quarter? We're talking about one-fifth now. And I think that's a compromise you're hearing from our people that say, hey, look, the community needs this. We understand where developers and builders need to fund this, and we're willing to step back and give that to them. However, we do want to see some things happen. We want to see single-family, or just one moment, single-story homes in the Triangle area. We'd like to see the Triangle area boundaries retained as-is. None of this bifurcation, it really cuts us out of the system, and we think it really was, was wrong-headed to even go in that direction. The results, and we also want the results of the work done by the citizens in the Triangle area to, with regard to the building standards, to remain in place. And finally, all access to Jetmar Way should remain open, and we should look at this in the future as we're getting into the connector. And I really appreciate any time and efforts that you guys have had and the effort of your staff in getting us to this point. So again, if you have any questions, I'll be available, and there'll be people from our Triangle area here, which I think, are there a few out there? All right, all right. So we just found them tonight, so.
I just happened to have the signs.
Don't know where they got those.
Carolyn Ryan. Calling Carolyn is Don Ryan.
Hi, thank you for listening to me. I'm going to be one of the sad people if you keep the zoning of AR1 acre on the Di Benedetto property. As everyone knows, and he talked about, the infrastructure can't be done with one acre. You can't put a septic tank on one acre, and you can't put a well on one acre. You can't put roads through the 40 acres that are there without significant cost. And that has to be divided up among many lots. And I'm not talking four to an acre, I'm not talking five to an acre, I'm talking three to an acre to make it work cost-wise, to be able to put in, bring in the city sewer, bring in the city water. The people that are south of South Elkhart Boulevard, that you've allowed the one-quarter acre and the five units to an acre, there are not enough there to provide money to bring the infrastructure in. The infrastructure is the property, the Di Benedetto property, developing that in one-third acres is the key to bringing the money in and the infrastructure in for that area. And also, we're not asking people who have five acres to divvy up their land, but certainly if you do have five acres and you would benefit from the infrastructure coming in, maybe 10 years down the line, when you're passing your land on to your children or want to sell, it might be nice to have city water and sewer if you want to divvy up your land into one-acre parcels. No one's asking you to do it now, and if you want to have your horses and your cattle or whatever there, no one's taking that away from you. But to bring the infrastructure in to that area, in the Triangle area, you need to have one-third acre. In March of 2017, you voted unanimously to do one-third acre, and I ask you to honor that, your original vote that you took back in March of 2017. Thank you.
Next speaker, Don Ryan.
And Mr. Ryan submitted an image. I'll pull that up to accompany his comments, but it's a map of the area.
Good evening, council members. I would like to, can I get my image up on the screen, please?
Not yet, yeah, not yet. Let me do the driving here, so see if I can pop this up. There we are. There we are.
If you would please refer to the display on your screen. Back in 2017, when it was originally anticipated, the area south of Elkhart Boulevard would be one, a 4DU designation. That and the SEQA documents were correlated or done based upon those numbers. There was no study as to the availability of the current properties for development with respects to any restrictions on the use of that land. I made up this, this document in front of you. The red zones are commercially-zoned properties. The gray area in the middle is, is of strategic importance. It's a wetland area, which cannot be, which from every pragmatic standpoint cannot be developed. The only property that's left for development is the Brownwood property and 10-acre parcel immediately south of that called the Camuso property, and the property which I am involved in, north of Elkhart Boulevard, the Di Benedetto property. Given the realities of this situation, the initial study was done on basically 500 homes in the area. Unfortunately, now we are down to approximately 200 homes. The area south of the wetlands will, in all likelihood, those, all those properties all have homes on them, and with the number of owners, et cetera, the cost of infrastructure, et cetera, to bring those down into one-quarter acre parcels is just prohibitive. The same thing applies to any infrastructure being brought in down, down Elkhart Boulevard to the Di Benedetto property or to the property across the street in the green. Those are the only areas that can be, that, that can afford to bring in the infrastructure, which your plan to have one-acre zoning over the entire area, which is in white, above the Di Benedetto property, if all of that were to be zoned one acre, I assume it would be the intent of the board someday to have one-acre parcels there. Unfortunately, without infrastructure, you can't have one-acre parcels there. The, the long and the short of this is, in order to achieve the goals of the city with respects to traffic and infrastructure and noise and everything else, there has to be a coordinated effort between the Di Benedetto property and the property in green down below, working together to make it happen. They cannot happen independently of each other, and I can assure you, the property, the Di Benedetto property, which was already zoned one acre, would have been developed if it had been economically feasible at that time. It wasn't done, and consequently, we have, we have the situation we are now. I would prefer to look at this as an opportunity to fix a lot of problems in the area, and I appreciate your consideration. My time is up. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Our next speaker is Leon Roland.
I'm, I'm sorry, did you say something to me?
No, our next speaker is Leon.
I'm Leon Roland. I've, I built my house on Jetmar Way 37 years ago, so I am a longtime resident here in Elk Grove. I was in on the negotiations to make that Di Benedetto property one acre. At that time, I worked for Planning and Construction Division for the state of California. I said, there's no way that they can bring in the utilities for that. Why are those individuals making that one acre instead of two, two-acre parcels when you can have a well and septic system? That was the only affordable way to do that property. Since then, they were supposed to do a drainage study. The city was. Well, that was 20 years ago. Has, has the study been completed? Because we have no drainage system at all in that area, no storm drain system. I get flooded every year. I, I had, I just unplugged my pumps from out in front this morning. Okay? All, if you guys allow that to be developed into Quarter Acre or whatever, all of the pesticides, insecticides that people use around their homes will be run off and it will come onto my property because there is no storm drain system. I called the city, I says, hey, I'm getting flooded out because the drainage is plugged up by the neighbors. They said, they came out, they took a look, your people took a look. They says, we can't do anything, there's no easements, sue your neighbor. Now, why in the world would you guys appropriate money for a study for the storm drain and then not do anything for 20 years? You know, you think there isn't a problem, oh, I want Quarter Acre parcels, I want this, I want that. You know, it's all about money. Oh, I can make this much profit on this many houses rather than this much profit on one house. So I'm discouraged, I'm disgusted, and I'm not very happy with the decisions that are being made by the city of Elk Grove and by you guys. Now, I know I'm supposed to be polite and be nice to you guys. Hey, I've been there for 37 years, I'm tired. I'm tired of the fight. I'm tired of getting all that water on my property. I'm tired of the potential pollution that will be coming on my property if you guys allow this to go Quarter Acre parcels. It drains right on my place. So please, listen to an old-time resident.
Thank you, sir. There are no additional speakers, so I want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Council deliberation and direction.
Well, I'll just say that I've probably been closer to this than most, going back to the original adoption of the Triangle plan, as well as this current effort. And, you know, I think the, the biggest takeaway for me on this, our current situation, is that we needed to do things in a different manner on the front end. And I think we were asked to make a pretty significant land use designation change and did so without necessarily doing the outreach that we should have done from that point. So I've sat down with folks on both sides of this, and I'm, I'm ready to weigh in on my thoughts, but I need to hear from the council whether or not they want to uphold our previous positions or move forward with something else.
Okay. Councilman?
Well, you know, after meeting with some of the residents, you know, I, I'm okay with moving forward with something else. I have, I have some thoughts myself as, you know, looking at this more.
Okay. Councilman?
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years, actually, in multiple meetings, whether it's been in private meetings with different folks, trying to get their individual opinions, or in group settings with the council and the planning commission. And I, I think we're, all these documents are living documents that we try to uphold, and then when we find possibilities for something that's better. And over time, things change. And I think we've looked, kind of beat this into the ground pretty hard with a lot of different people, and I'm willing to look at some alternatives myself.
Okay. Number one?
When I first got on the council, one of the things that I did was took some time with both Peggy, Stan, and Mike, and they gave me a tour of the Triangle area and kind of gave me the history behind their family and their roots there. And then I got a chance to spend some time with them again this morning, and I'm, I'm ready to look at something that would work better for everybody. And I, I think Mike said it, where it's not going to make everybody happy, and I don't think there's an answer where we can make everybody happy, but to where we can compromise and maybe find something that can work, I'm ready for that as well, too. So, yep, I'm ready for something else.
Yeah, I think compromise is the key word here, is not everyone's going to be happy, obviously, but I'm prepared to move forward and see what, what we can do.
So if, I'd like to throw some things out there for, for council deliberation. You know, looking at the, Mr. Padilla's position paper here, there's a couple of things. As I look at the overall land plan and hearing residents, and, you know, there's a, there's a, I don't know if everybody got it, but there's an email from the Di Benedetto family as well, asking for preservation of the one acres along these lots. But I think that the compromise lies in, and it makes for a natural barrier, and that is Elk Grove Boulevard. If you preserve the one-acre parcels along the front, and then you afford greater density on the south end for, in order to finance infrastructure at a, at a later date. But I'm going to go a step further, and there's, the diagram that was proposed was, mentioned was a little bit of RD5 and a little bit RD4. And, you know, frankly, I, you know, I challenge people just to drive by a house and tell the difference between, you know, RD4 and RD5. So I would, I would propose we make, and recognizing that the, the wetlands that are on some of the properties, so you're either not going to get all of that developed, or the cost is so you're either not going to get all of that developed, or the cost is going to be even greater because you're going to mitigate for that wetlands. So, I propose putting that bottom southern triangle as an RD five. And I personally don't, for safety reasons, don't like more private driveways, single driveways going out on Elk Grove Boulevard, recognizing it's a main thoroughfare. And so, I would put back in, whether it be a wall or a berm, and have a row of one acres along Elk Grove Boulevard to, again, show the consistent zoning along to the north side, but then allowing for greater density south of there. So, you basically have the backs of one acre parcels along the southern edge of Elk Grove Boulevard, but then you would have one acre parcels across an interior street, and then behind those, you'd have RD five going farther south.
And so, what did you say relative to the first level of homes on the south side? Or did you say everything on the south side RD five is what you're proposing?
I think he's proposing RD fives instead of the fours.
Yeah, but along the edge of Elk Grove Boulevard, so that the north side can see a consistency. There was a diagram that staff showed earlier about a simulation, so you had one acres on that, just on the south side, so you have one acres, but you're not, you don't have driveways going out there, so you're basically, your driveways are going to the south in your mirror image, so that you have an internal street. So, basically, you know, a street full of one acres there, and then backing, does that make sense? So, you have Elk Grove Boulevard, back of a one acre lot, internal street, front of a one acre lot, that's an internal street, and then behind those, you have RD fives going south. And then you can do, instead of not all, you know, recognizing the range of product, I wouldn't say all single stories, but, you know, maybe you could do a percentage of single stories would be required.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the comments from my colleagues here, it helps me get some clarity on the issue. And, you know, when this plan was originally adopted, I was still in the planning commission then, and it was meant to be an experiment of trying to get a mix of lot sizes within an area, to act as the transition between the rural area, which is two acres and above, and more urban development. And staff, in their effort to do that, could find no way of determining who, which areas get what lot sizes and which areas get these lot sizes, and so they just basically decided that they needed to just put an overlay over the whole thing and just allow it to happen through attrition or atrophy or whatever you want to call it. And it was spurned by the Van Rutten and Capelua developments to the north. The county had already broken the cellophane with the Silvergate, and so now we had adjacent subdivisions coming in to that, and well, what are we going to do with everything else? The long and the short of it is, you know, when you have the adage of splitting the baby, which was when two women claimed the same child, and King Solomon's offer was, "Well, I'll just split the baby in half and give you each half," and the woman who protested and said, "No, let her have the child," he knew was the true mother, because she gave up, she was willing to give up the whole baby in order to see it survive. And I feel in this that both parties have definitely acted in earnest and come forward with the spirit of compromise, if not the letter of compromise. But I think that the Triangle Group, in their concession on the area to the south, offered to give up the baby. And Darren, bless your heart, but going to that one acre strip, you're negotiating backwards. We're in a good spot with the RD four, because I think, as was mentioned, in order to get the critical mass of infrastructure costs spread, in order to make that northern parcel developable at all, it's going to be borne by that southern parcel. And doing that strip of one acre lots just chews up so much land that you're taking, you know, what would have been twenty or twenty-five lots to spread that cost across and putting it to four or five lots. So, I can't support that, but the problem is that then we get to how do we handle the sound attenuation? Because the other thing is, whether it's a quarter acre lot or whether it's a one acre lot, according to Christopher Jordan's diagram, that outdoor recreation area goes all the way from the back of the house to the other side of the fence. And so, you've got to be at sixty dB whether you're at an acre lot and the house is a hundred feet off the roadway, or if you're at a quarter acre lot and the house is forty feet off the roadway. So, I think the one last issue here, in my mind, there's two to hammer out, and that is whether or not to do as you're saying and maybe increase some of the RD five density farther to the south, because it doesn't impact the rest of the plan area. And the second is, and I think seeing that graphic of the already approved Brownwood Estates, to me, a well landscaped berm in looking at the figure three is more aesthetically pleasing than a frontage road with front yard lots and cars parked in the driveway would be. So, I think I'm willing to go part and parcel with the Triangle Group recommendations with those minor tweaks.
Let me just ask you something, Councilman Hume, because what I was, when you talked about the sound attenuation, the diagram, the house itself, right, was, that was one of the things that Christopher was showing, is the house itself. So, I'm not suggesting that there's a frontage road there, just...
I understand that. By doing a one acre lot, that outdoor recreation area is the entire space from the house to their fence, right? So, whether your backyard is a hundred feet deep or whether your backyard is thirty feet deep, it's still sixty dB at the nearest point.
At the nearest point, yeah, right, okay. Yeah, and then the, but the, well, anyway, that's fine, okay. So, what is your proposal?
My proposal then is essentially the Triangle Group's proposed points, which I don't have a hard copy on the front of me.
I still think that the, I'm not sure I have, but I still think if you're going to, you're better off just doing all RD five than a little bit of RD five and a little bit RD four around it. And so, I was trying to offset the increase in more RD, you know, changing the RD four to RD five, I'll offset that by putting that, you know, sliver of one acre. But I know what you're saying, so I, that's, I still think that it's better to keep it all one zoning, because plus you have the issue of the wetlands, which nobody knows, I mean, we don't have the details here, so by the time they try and, you know, it's either the cost of mitigation of those wetlands or the avoidance of those wetlands, you're not going to, you're still going to be challenged with, you know, developing and financing the infrastructure.
Right. So, I guess then my concession from up here would be to keep that RD four buffer at Elk Grove Boulevard, and whatever you want to do south of that is fine. And then you just brought up the other piece of this, is that we need to put a financing plan together for the area to make sure that those costs are borne.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Detrick?
Yeah, actually, I've spent a lot of time meeting with Councilman Hume and a lot of the folks here today, and not sure whether the majority of the folks here that had the green flags with Mike, what your position, I know what your position is, been on the berm, but I know, one of the things we talked about in that meeting is we may not be able to find a sound remedy. And that's why we've gave this back to Christopher Jordan to give us some of those diagrams on what those sound problems could be created. And so, I would support Councilman Hume's recommendation of keeping the RD four on the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard. RD five after you have the RD fours and all one acre to the north. I think that's the best compromise that we can come up with.
Number one?
I can support that. I also have the diagram that was drawn out and what the transit community gave me as well, too, and I could see that being a compromise.
Okay, good. I'm fine with berm, I'm fine with supporting the vice mayor on this. Do we have enough?
I just want to make sure we're looking at this correctly. Staff's got full clarity on what your direction is, so I'll go, this is the graphic that you're referring to. So, this is the RD four piece, this is what they had offered up as the RD five. To understand, is the direction, the balance of this is RD five? Or is this the exclusive RD five block? The balance of it would be RD five? Okay. So, both this block that's labeled here as RD four and this block that's RD five would be five. This block would remain RD four, and you're saying a berm along the south side of Elk Grove Boulevard, correct? Okay. And then everything north of Elk Grove Boulevard would be, continue to be the one acre lotting. In that particular case, are you continuing with the berm and the prior DeBenedetto approvals in that particular case?
Well, consistency, so the corridor has continuity.
Okay, so, okay, I got it. So, at that point, we will start working up the revisions. I can't speak yet to timing, given the density changes that you've directed this evening. Staff needs to go back and look at that a little bit more, there may be some supplemental analysis we need to do. So, once we know more, we will communicate through the email, of course, email system we have with those that have been participating, and then we'll look at the process to bring this back for you for action.
Okay, two questions, thank you. So, one, is this a property line that I'm looking at for the RD four? That horizontal southerly line? Okay, so I'm just wondering, how far back are...
Yeah, I think it's roughly, I believe it's this line, is that correct, Mike? The boundary that you had drawn for that RD four, was it this property line?
Can I address it?
Yeah. Stan? Yeah.
According to our conversation, we figured four hundred and fifty feet from Elk Grove Boulevard, south.
So, I can speak to that in a slightly less technical or precise manner. The way we came to that is it's three lots worth.
Okay. So, you'd have the lot backing Elk Grove Boulevard, the lot facing that, and then the lot backing that would all be at an RD four density?
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we discussed, and then I went and asked, conferred with Christopher on how to put that in language that makes sense, and we came up with a footage of four hundred and fifty feet. So, either way, three lots.
And if I remember correctly, that's plus or minus about where that boundary lies. I want you to go back and double check if that sounds right.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I mean, the reality is, you're going to end up doing two full blocks of, you're not going to put RD four across the street from an RD five, but this...
You could.
I don't, well, anyway, I think that'll be a challenge for a builder, but the other thing is, oh, I think it goes without saying, right, we got, partly why we got here was the map was overconditioned in the first place. I know you guys will make it right to make sure it's, the conditions are appropriate for the developments and the impact of each map, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess we have a motion, sorry, mayor.
No.
There's no vote, also just direction.
Oh, okay.
All right, next item, please.
That'll take us on to section ten, regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item ten point one, which is consider resolution of the city council authorizing the mayor to execute an employment agreement with Jason Berman, the position of city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council members, Jackie Langenberg, your city HR manager. I'm really excited to have this item in front of you. It's the...
Folks, if you can take the conversation outside, we're trying to finish the meeting. Thank you.
Anyway, like I was saying, I'm pretty excited to have this item in front of you. It's the employment agreement with the city manager. I think you've all had an opportunity to review it. If you have any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Any questions? Nope, perfectly clear. All right, at this point, want to open to public comments, seeing no members of the public signed to speak. Want to close public comment, Councilor Bill Shann, direction.
Best recommendation.
Got a motion, got a second, all in favor?
Dang, you guys couldn't move and second that fast enough.
We're all excited.
Can I third it at least?
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose a position. All right, next item.
Mayor, before we go on, I just wanted to make sure we made that decision before Jason changed his mind.
Well said, well said. All right, ten point two.
Ten point two is consider appointment of voting members to the disability advisory committee.
Somebody wanting to speak on the item?
Do we have somebody?
Trails committee.
Yes, we do. Oh, I'm sorry. Would you come to the podium, please, and state your name?
Hello, everybody, my name is George Reiter. I live in Elk Grove, very close to this triangle, and the question was not answered to me. This gentleman over there was, has already left, looks like, there is a wetland and he's always flooded. What are we doing with that?
Sir, we've already moved on from that item. You can ask our public works director if you have a specific question about that.
Yeah, I would just...
I thought you had something to say about this current item.
Why don't we do this? Why don't you take it offline, have a conversation, he can talk to you outside.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right, ten point two, Mr. Lindgren.
Where that lands us is consider appointment of voting members to the disability advisory committee and the trails committee, and also a status update and potential appointment to the historic preservation committee. As we rolled into 2019, we had vacancies, one vacancy for a voting member each on the disability advisory committee and the trails committee as we looked into 2019. We've also had two vacant positions as alternate members for the historic preservation committee. Tuesday, at the top of this week, I had some updates as far as the application pools that we'd received and some updates of folks. One of them was that we added a member of the public, Mr. Daljit Singh Sandhu, put in applications for actually all three of the committees that have openings tonight. We also had one of the applicants withdraw their application. They looked into twenty, I contacted him back in December. As they got into January of 2019, they looked at their obligations for the year and saw scheduling conflicts and withdrew their application, though they are interested in serving in the future. Where that leaves us is we have four openings, or four applications for one vacant opening on the disability advisory committee, five applications for one opening on the trails committee, and then we have for consideration the possibility to appoint one of those alternate member positions, as we have the one member that submitted an application to all three boards. With that, I can ask any questions, and I think we do have some folks signed up to speak on this item tonight.
Okay. Is Mr. Singh's application included here? I didn't see it.
That would have been forwarded over to the city council. If you need a copy of that, I can provide that for you.
Oh, okay. All right, at this point, want to open for public comment, seeing that there are a couple of speakers signed up to speak. Sharon Anderson.
Thanks, mayor and council members. My simple request is, for the trails committee, since I am on the trails committee, is that we make sure we have representation from, I love everybody who has applied, I'm glad that they have, but we would love to get some additional representation on the trails committee from folks that live west of 99 or even further west than that, because currently the existing members that remain, we're all east of 99, and we would love to expand the views of what's going on west of 99. We have infrastructure that still needs to be put in for, like in your area, over there in the Stone Lakes area, I mean, there's some hot stuff, but we don't know how the Feng Shui goes in those areas. We kind of know better where we all live, and we ride all over the place, we walk all over the place, but it certainly would be lovely to have a little bit of influence from west of 99 again. Aaron Silva leaving us had that, and, you know, I'm sure, we don't get very many public, very much public comment at our meetings, so it'd be really nice to incorporate that. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next speaker is Deanna Donahue.
Good evening, my name is Deanna Donahue, and I submitted my application for the trails committee. I've been resident of Elk Grove since 1997, and I'm a registered civil engineer in the state of California, so I know a little bit about the topic. So, I know a little bit about the topic.
No offense, Bob.
I don't know, we always get those comments. And I do live west of 99, so I would be every one of those people. And I do live west of 99, so I would be every one of those people. But the, the other reasons that, you know, I applied to this is one, I'm trying to give back to the community more than just my job, because civil engineering, we do affect the public. But lastly, I do walk the trails. I have two German Shepherds. And so I'm out there all the time and, you know, I think there's some things that we can improve on. And so I thought this would be a great way, not only to give back, but, you know, since I'm using the trails, it'd be good, so. Anyway, thank you for my consideration for my application.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ann Hennessy.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Ann Hennessy and I've applied for the Disability Advisory Committee. And thank you for considering my application. I have a background in special education. I have a master's degree in special education. I also have a daughter with special needs. And that's why we moved to Elk Grove because of the services that Elk Grove provides. Many years ago, we moved here, 10 or 11. I'm currently an intervention teacher. I used to be a special education teacher. I'm currently an intervention general education teacher. But I'm very interested in the rights and access to services for the disabled. Many, many years ago, when I was much younger, I had a chance to interview a woman from Sacramento who was getting an award because she was so involved with people, for people with disabilities and helping provide them with new opportunities. And I asked her, I said, why do you do this? And she said, everybody thinks it's because I'm a great person, but it's a very selfish reason. I do it because I have a child with disabilities. And if you make the world better for your own child, the world becomes better for all children. And that's become my philosophy. So thank you for considering me.
Thank you, ma'am. Chris Newman?
Good evening. My name is Chris Newman and I'm an applicant for the Trails Committee. And I'm a 25-year Elk Grove resident and all 25 years have been on the west side of Elk Grove, west side of 99. And I'm an avid trail user. I'm a cyclist and a former runner. And I've been on, I think, every single foot of the trails west of 99 and most of them east of 99. So I have some ideas. I work in Folsom and I also ride my bike there often before and after work. So I have some ideas on things that maybe we could do better and some, you know, things that I've seen biking there that maybe we could utilize and push here. So I hope to have that opportunity to be able to participate on the committee. Thank you.
25 years and west of 99 the whole time. You were one of the early birds over there.
I was, yes, correct, before it was incorporated, so, thank you.
Excellent. All right, thank you. All right, members, want to start?
Well, I think we got, again, all good applicants from looking at the resumes. I think I'm going to give the nod to the civil engineer on the, on the Trails Committee.
You're biased.
A little bit, but, you know, I think also, you know, I think that her technical expertise could help in that group and as they look at implementing, working with development applications and trying to provide, you know, input there. The other one, I mean, all these points for showing up, too. Ms. Hennessy, I think, would, would serve well. And then Mr. Sandhu applied for all three, so I think he'd round out for the historical preservation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Detrick?
Yeah, I can go either way with Chris or you, I guess, different qualifications, but both enthusiastic and I think either one of you guys would do a great job. The other thing is we've tried to, as Sharon mentioned earlier, spread it out across the city. So right now, we don't have any District One or Four, which you guys, both of you represent. So that's a plus for both of you. So I can go with either one of them there. And then obviously, Ann, I think applaud you for being here tonight and sharing your story, which means a lot. And so I think those are my recommendations.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I won't belabor the issue, but I do want to thank Sharon for coming out and giving her two cents on, on getting the geographic diversity on the committee so that, you know, folks who have different eyes see different things. And so I think both Deanna and Christopher, as has been mentioned, bring different qualities to the table. Both seem to be passionate about using our trails network and both would be good additions to the committee. So good luck on that one, Mr. Mayor. And then I would give the nod to Ms. Hennessy for showing up and being here and presenting in person, although all three of the applicants had a great application. And then I think that Daljit, while I respect him greatly, he, because of the east side emphasis for the Trails Committee and because we've got some folks with pretty significant disability qualifications, I would think he would make a good fit on the Historic Preservation Committee.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Wayne?
I thank Ms. Hennessy for coming out and sharing her story as well. So I think she'd be a great addition to the Disability Advisory Committee. Looking at both Ms. Donahue and Mr. Newman, it looks like, you know, I actually think Mr. Newman, I like that he's walked every single trail and that it looks like he's an avid biker and a runner. And so I'd love to hear his input on what he thinks we can do. And he works for Cal PIA, which I, I love Cal PIA. And I also feel that Ms. Donahue is in District Four, which is what I represent because I see her zip code as 95757. I took away a point because she's a civil engineer, sorry. But she's a woman and she's in my district and she came, so I'm torn up here, you know. Good luck with that. I can go either way. I think they'd both be excellent choices for this committee.
Too bad she couldn't replace the engineer we have.
All right, with the input, I'm prepared to go ahead and nominate Ms. Hennessy for the Disability Advisory Committee. And for the Trails Committee, I'm prepared to nominate Deanna Donahue for that position. And again, thank you all for applying. It's really important that members of the community, our constituents, engage with a conversation with community members, community leaders, and also with the council. And for many of you who have stepped up, please don't feel rejected. There are going to be many other opportunities in which you can get involved. So thank you all for applying.
And we get the historical preservation, too.
Oh, did I miss that?
Yeah, I didn't give my comment, but I'll support.
Okay, that's right. Mr. Daljit, so I'll go ahead and push Mr. Daljit for the Historical Preservation Committee. All right, we good?
Yep.
All right.
Second.
Thank you all. All right.
Congrats, everybody.
Congratulations, everyone. Appreciate it. And let's go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:03.